All right, I'll call the meeting to order. If you could, please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming, and anybody that's tuned in online, as I have stated every meeting for the last year, we are holding this meeting today in Zoom and in person pursuant to the governor's executive order for the pandemic. With that, I'll move on to the roll.
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
And Trustee Betzinger.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum this evening. The first item is public participation, public comments, two-minute opportunity, any member of the public. If you can mute your mics if you're... There you go. Mute it when you're not talking. We can mute it? Thanks. Is there anybody? I suspect we do have people in here and maybe on Zoom that want to chat, so...
I understand. We have one gentleman on Zoom that wants to, and it looks like we have some people signed up over here also.
Okay. Well, let's hit the Zoom connection while we still have that, just in case we lose it. So this is the... Mr. Zimmerman, I don't see you here.
He's coming.
I saw him a second ago. There we go.
Can you hear me now?
There you go. Yep. All right, so just wanted to advise you, we can hear you. We can't see video, which is fine. But the floor is yours. You have two minutes to make your comments.
All right, so my biggest thing, I've been a resident of Montgomery since 2014. We have made several complaints about Mayfield Drive. You know, the speeding is one thing. You're never going to slow anybody down. Most likely, they're going to... They got their own foot. But the amount of traffic that comes through our road creates so much danger. I live right off of a curve, and you know, I've been explained to you by the police department and everybody else, and chief, and everybody that I've met with, that, you know, the curve makes it seem like they're going faster. Well, I would invite any one of you to sit in my driveway and tell me the curve is what's making them look like they're going faster. It's got to stop. I have three young children. Our whole neighborhood is full of children. I have a neighbor down the road who's got very sophisticated video equipment, who's got several incidents regarding vehicles leaving the roadway. So it doesn't matter if we keep our kids in our yard or in our backyard or wherever we want to put them. These cars are leaving the roadway because they can't control their speed, and they're hitting trees, they're hitting mailboxes, and one day, they're going to hit a kid. You know, I've already told the police department, and you know, they're not going to get there fast enough. They hit one of my kids, we're going to have a much bigger problem. And we have to figure out how you guys are going to control this traffic. I heard at one point that this road was supposed to be a dead end. I'm not saying that should be necessarily an option, but I definitely think there should be some speed control, whether it be speed humps, or stop signs, or whatever the case may be, because half the cars are speeding down the driveway, or, you know, well, not half of them. But I mean, there's definitely a few low riders that would definitely choose to go somewhere different if there were speed humps in the way. It's just, it's out of control. We've had instances where my wife literally just, you know, sees a car and all she does is, you know, push her hands down as if to tell the person to slow down, and that car slammed on her brakes right in front of our house and threatened my wife right in front of our house and my kids. The neighborhood's going to crap, and nobody's really doing anything about it. But the speeding, the speeding and the traffic, it needs to go. It needs to do something. I've had so many meetings with Montgomery Police Department. I've had them at my house in my front yard. I've had Mr. Youngerman, who seems to be the only one that cares what happens out there and to do anything about it. Mr. Brawley, I've met with you at a Dunkin' Donuts, and we've had a long conversation, and nothing ever happens. So I mean, I don't know what else we have to do as residents. But if you care about the residents like I care about my neighbors, something needs to happen.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate your comments, and I don't know if it's by chance or planned, but we are talking about this later on tonight on the agenda. So if you want to stay tuned into the meeting, I'm sure we'll have something for you to chew on there, but I would like to hear what your thoughts are. If you want to email or reach out to Steve or somebody afterwards, because we'll have a couple proposals tonight that, you know, regardless of what the board thinks, would probably end up going to, not regardless, but in addition to what the board thinks. They'd go before your subdivision for a community meeting in the future. So with that, I will... I'll move on to our next public comment tonight, but thank you for zooming in. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else that had either submitted an email or is on the Zoom that would like to make public comment?
We did not receive any emails or voicemails. The other people signed up here or for an item that are later on the agenda, and they would speak during that time for liquor licenses.
Got it. So it's for their agenda item. It's not a public comment?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Is there anybody that did not sign up that's wishing to make public comment if you're not on the agenda elsewhere? Okay. Moving on to the lead service line replacement award presentation. Pete?
Thanks, President Brawley. I'd like to do a short presentation on the... Present for the project, so to give a little background, if you don't mind, and...
Now, real quick, I think you will have to share your content on the Zoom so that Teresa can see it.
So it should be this one, I think. Can we get a...
It's loading, which is a good sign. Oh, you know what? It looks like you're paused. Click the resume share at the top of the PowerPoint. Maybe? Right under stop share, or above stop share. So just move your cursor all the way over to that one. It's two monitors. I think it did this last time. There you go. There you go. We got it.
All right, now I just got to figure out how to move it. So can I look at it on this screen or no?
Yes. Oh, and actually see it? Yeah, maybe not.
But will this advance at the same time?
Hey, it looked like it closed.
All right, sorry. I think this won't work. Okay, sorry for that delay.
Pete, wait on... I'm not seeing it here.
Is there a way to set up that so it's... Because it's two monitors.
Okay, I got to admit, I am not following this at all.
There you go.
Yes, yes. Great. Thank you.
Yeah, understood. Okay, sorry for that. Anyway, so the village, as you all well know, embarked on a lead service line replacement program starting in 2017, and it's been completed. We did submit the project for award app... Award for the... With the APWA, the American Public Water Works Association, and the American Council of Engineering Companies. And happy to report that we won the Project of the Year Award with the APWA for environmental projects less than $5 million, and we won a merit award from the American Society of Engineering Consulting Companies. So with that, I'd like to just go through a little bit of the project to recap it and just refresh everybody's memory, if we can.
Is it advancing in front of you?
No, I don't have the program on my screen.
There you go. Now with your mouse there, then hit Enter.
Okay. This is just the... You know, these projects aren't done in a vacuum. There's many people that are involved. Obviously, we were involved, but of course, the village is the primary center of the project, but then there's a lot of consultants and the contracting and others that worked on the project. We had a great contractor with Brant Excavating, which is very important for a successful project. EPA was very helpful. They provided a million dollars in funding for the project. That was a non... It was a forgivable loan that was given to the village. We had very good soil support from Obino, who've done other projects for the village. The go above board folks were the asbestos abatement people, and that was one area that I don't think any of us anticipated when we started the project. And then, of course, KDOT, we had some projects on the KDOT right away that we had to get permitting for. The goal was to start out was to replace all the lead service lines in the village. It turned out there ended up being 106. All of those have been replaced. We've replaced them from the main to the meter. So 100% of the lead service line for each customer has been replaced, and that's at no cost to the resident. So that was one of the things when we got the review of our grant application that impressed the judges, was the fact that we were 100% successful. That's something that's sometimes difficult to achieve, so. We had a fair amount of public outreach when we started the project. We didn't envision some of the challenges that we had, but we had good cooperation with the residents. We did start out the project pre-COVID and then moved into COVID. So a little more challenging once we got into COVID, for sure. The home assessments became critical. We had to get into everybody's residence to assess the location of their meter so that we could figure out how to replace it. And that's where we identified that there was some, you know, these... A lot of these houses were built in the 60s and 70s where asbestos tile was fairly common at that time. But regardless, we had to mitigate that. But the other thing is, you can't really tell by looking at tile whether it is or isn't asbestos for sure. We suspected it was, but we had to do some pre-testing so that when we came into the house to do the actual lead service line replacement, that we would have mitigation people there to make sure that that was handled properly. So that was part of the recon that had to be done. Contractor was responsible for quite a few things. They did a great job of coordinating with the residents. The asbestos abatement, again, was a big thing that we had to make sure happened at the same time. And we wanted to be in and out of these houses in the shorter period of time as we could. As you all could appreciate, we tried to minimize the impact to the resident. You know, none of us would like to have our bathrooms tied up for very long. So we tried to do that as quickly as possible, and I think the contractor did a good job of getting in and out. I would say 10 years ago, this project probably not feasible because we had a lot of slab construction. We had to directional drill under the slab and come up in the middle of the home. And the technology that's available today is capable of getting... Hitting a one-foot square in that house, and that was pretty amazing. But without that technology, I don't think these, you know, these projects would have worked. So that directional drilling was a key to the project. We did experience, as I said, some delays with COVID. I had to adopt some protocols on the fly. The contractor, again, was very good about establishing that. They were doing daily temperature checks, hand washing, you know, sanitizing, gloves and masks, and, you know, were very respectful of the residents. It took longer than we expected, but it was because of some of COVID that slowed down our construction. But just going through the process of identifying what we had to address and making sure that we had budget for all of it. So we did start in 2017 and basically completed the project in 2020. So a successful project, but it did take a little longer than we expected. We got approved for a loan of $1,389,000. The program for lead service lines from the State Revolving Loan Fund is a million-dollar grant forgiveness. So the maximum amount of the grant we could get was a million. We had some general obligation bonds on... That were used to match our forgivable loan. And the final construction cost came in at $1,020,000, so slightly under what we expected for the construction. In summary, we had 19 basements, 87 slabs, and I said the slabs posed probably the biggest challenge for us. And then 58 of those homes, we had to do asbestos abatement. And once again, we had 100% cooperation. This happens to be the last home that we replaced the lead service line. The mayor was kind enough to be there to witness it. So it was nice to see that at the final end. So with that, I just want to say thanks to the village, and I'd like to present to Public Works and Mayor the Public Works Project of the Year Award plaque. And then we have a poster that we prepared to kind of memorialize the project so that can be used just to explain what happened back in 2000, so 2020. So I don't know if you can maybe just take a picture?
Do you want to do a call out or anything? I think I've said this every time I've talked about it the last three years, is jumping out ahead of basically every other municipality that was built or built out decades ago, who's now being required or will be soon required to do this by the state, this funding won't be able to handle any more of those guys. So if you are officially out of the lead service line, that game, so. All right. Okay. All right, I'll hold it.
Okay, you hold it. All right. I'll move that way, then I can go higher on you. I'll get your pants on you.
I'm just kidding. You have a bad jeans.
There you go.
Very cool.
Yes, he moved to... Took a position at Huntley, and so we're working with him on some projects there, so.
Thanks. Well, as long as we're still on recording, and they can still see us.
We are. I don't know what happened to the screen. Yeah. I have to turn on with that, if it can, though. I don't know what happened up there, but we're still good. We're recording. I don't know what's going on up there.
Cool. Well, we got another presentation coming up.
Yeah.
Will the little monitors come on?
No, because that's why that one... It would come on if that one's on.
We are tech savvy.
We are. We are killing it.
We may not be good at technology, but we did remove all of our lead service lines, so. With cool technology. All right. While you're figuring that out... Oh, there you go. All right, so I'm going to move on to the consent agenda, keep things rolling here. I'll read the items, entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the village board meeting from March 22nd, executive session minutes from March 22nd, the building report for March of 2021, accounts receivable March 2021, water production report for March, the refuse report for February, accounts payable through April 8th, and the cancellation of the April committee, the whole meeting.
So move.
Second. Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
And Trustee Youngerman?
Yes. Okay, 6-0, thank you. Under items for separate action this evening, we have a PSA with EEI for engineering services for an alternate water source study update in the amount of $70,211. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Brawley. So before the board tonight, as you mentioned, is the PSA with Engineering Enterprises to perform an alternate source study update. The elements included in the PSA are required for the village to analyze its options for sustainable, long-term water supply. The scope of services is detailed in the attachment B. It includes updating previous alternatives available to the village, and will also evaluate additional alternatives that have recently become an option for the village. This work is to be carried out in conjunction with an additional joint study with Oswego and Yorkville, and the PSA is consistent with the discussions and addresses the issues or the items discussed at the March 22nd meeting. Therefore, staff is recommending the approval of this PSA in the amount of $70,211. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those at this time.
Thanks, Mark. Any questions?
I have one. What's the timeline?
Last page.
Looking to be done in the fall.
The fall, okay.
And this, if you remember from our last meeting, will coincide exactly with the Oswego stuff that they're working on. It also gets us to a point where we could make a decision ahead, working with Joliet's timeline. We don't have to make that choice or that decision then, but we'd have all the information, which is important.
And this covers all of... Six... Was there six options?
Okay, correct. Thank you.
You will be seeing another... At the next meeting, as is mentioned, we're cost-sharing with Oswego and Yorkville on a study that's currently going on, and so we'll bring approval of our share of that at the next meeting. It'll tie in with this because EEI will use some of that information for this study.
All right.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, go ahead.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
And Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
I carry 6-0, thank you. Our next item is a PSA with EEI for our 2021 MFT and Infrastructure Road Program in the amount of $231,966. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Brawley. As you mentioned, the PSA tonight for the 2021 MFT Infrastructure Road Program with Engineering Enterprises is being presented. This portion of the project would consist of construction observation as well as management of the project. Staff along with EEI is... Has a scheduled meeting tomorrow with pre-construction meeting with builders, and will have schedule to follow here by the end of the week. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Yeah, I got a question for you. So the timeline on this that's in here, it looks like it's the construction timeline, is it? Oh, so it's just construction. It's not designed for next year?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, go on.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Thank you. I carry 6-0. All right, item C is an item for separate action, a water meter replacement program, meter and supplies purchase. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Brawley. So before the board tonight is a large inventory purchase presented for the board. This is in anticipation of the village putting out an RFP, potentially here in the next few weeks, for contracted services to begin for meter replacement. The village has been working to implement a meter replacement program for the last few years. Unfortunately, we've had some circumstances that have prevented that. This year particularly, obviously, the COVID pandemic has created multiple challenges with staff being able to enter homes, and so we were only doing emergency appointments as needed. So the idea... Or the situation that we fell into is kind of similar to what we've had in the past where we have a large sum of access funds available to us. And the idea for this agenda item is for us to have an inventory available for us to begin this process once that RFP is presented, and then we'll come in front of the board for... Ultimately for approval in order for us to kick off and begin this process going into next year. We do have roughly 1,200 meters that we're targeting for next year to be done contractually. Those are ideally going to be pinpointed in the Boulder Hill subdivision, which is where we're going to start our focus. There'll be an additional 500 that are done in-house with Montgomery Public Works staff. And then we're also addressing some of the commercial meters as well, so throughout this process. So as you see, there's a variety of different supplies that are needed. They're not all particularly residential meter. There are some commercial meters, as well as MXUs and other supplies needed for this project. So before the board tonight is these items for the amount of $222,497. If there are any questions, I am happy to entertain those at this time.
I have a question for you, Mark.
Oh, go ahead.
So do we have supplies ready because we weren't able to be going in the homes at this point?
Correct. So the initial plan was we had budgeted to start off and kick off our meter replacement program in this fiscal year. But due to the pandemic, obviously, we had to suspend that. So that's why we're trying to kind of springboard our inventory for next year's.
So with this per... You would have enough then to do the 1,700 total that the goal is to replace?
It would not cover the full 1,700. This would just be a springboard into... Because we still had inventory throughout the year, so we did expend some funds from this line item through the course of the year for other supplies that were needed for the emergency calls and... that were needed for, uh, the emergency calls and our new construction that has still been continuing to take place out in the Huntington, Chase and Belmera subdivisions.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So to clarify, so this budget line item is not just for meter replacements? It's meters in general, could use that new construction as well?
So it does, this line item does cover for new construction meters as well, yes.
Okay. And then there's 921 MXUs, but I see 600 meters, 12 meters, 23 Omni meters.
So the reason for the 921 is that the supplier offers a trade-in value. Uh, so we essentially get $10 off per MXU. Uh, depending on, on the model of the MXU, they vary in, in different, uh, amounts depending on their age. Some are prorated that are newer, but essentially where we came to the 921 is that's how many MXUs we currently have on hand and available for trade-in, um, so that we wanted to maximize and take advantage of that, that $10, um, trade-in value that we'll receive on those.
And that's the MXUs you're going to be replacing?
Correct.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Could you, uh, just for everybody's benefit, I know the iPearl meters are the standard water meters in homes and the commercials love explanatory. The Ally water meters, can you explain what those are, those are kind of a unique?
Sure, absolutely. So the Ally meter, um, is a residential meter that would basically fit in the same meter spread as the standard iPearl meter. The different functions that are available in the Ally are, is there's a actuated, um, shut-off valve inside of those, so, um, the idea behind that meter in some applications will be where we have single service lines that feed multiple tenant buildings, um, that have individual meters in them. So historically, in the event of an emergency, we're not able to, you know, terminate water, um, to one of those units individually. Unfortunately, with a single service line, we would have to shut off all of the tenants. So this meter would allow us the ability to remotely control that valve in order to shut off water, um, in the event of an emergency, so that way repairs could be made, um, and so on and so forth. So it, it's just another tool, um, in our toolbox. Uh, another great function of that meter is it does relay a bit more information than the standard iPearl. Um, it has, uh, a temperature sensor built into it too. Ultimately, the, the goal of the village is for us to move to a fixed base network system. Um, through that, once that fixed base network system is up and running, this Ally meter would also provide us with the ability, um, to receive alarms, um, when maybe snowbirds or, uh, people are on vacations in the wintertime and, and maybe their HVAC systems were to go out, um, or furnaces were to go out, beg your pardon, um, and, and allow us to notify residents of, of that outage before, uh, there's a potential water, um, pipe burst. So, uh, again, there's, there's more information available with those, um, but we'll be using them limited.
Yeah, and for the, for the iPearl one, is there functionality that allows you to, as a homeowner, set your own maximums to get up like I do with my Nest?
So through the course of the FlexNet system, there's what's called a, uh, user portal, uh, if the village elects to, to incorporate that into their, into our FlexNet system.
Which means that it costs more money?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So the portal would allow, uh, residents to be able to access their meter information, and yes, you could set parameters to give yourself, um, alerts, um, via text on your phone, um, however you so choose, yes.
Like if Delilah leaves the hose on again on the side of the house for a week and a half?
Yeah, there's, there's, yeah, there's a multitude of different limits that can be set, some are durations of flow, um, at a certain flow rate, some are maximum flows, um, so on and so forth.
Okay.
We've come a long way, because I remember when I first moved in the village, they would send you a card and you would read your own meter and you send that card back. And so it was all in the honor system. Then we changed the meters and then you had to literally, we walked around and you had to interrogate the button on the side of the house. That was very time-consuming, labor-intensive. Got good exercise, but it took a while to do it. And then we moved to the, the radio base where you drove around in a truck, and this is just going to be so great when it's set up, where they can literally sit in the office and push a button and get the reads, and if they need a final read, they can grab it without having to dispatch somebody. It's going to save a lot of money and labor. It's going to be a lot of convenience too for residents, and, and then also you, you would be able to tell if somebody, um, removed the meter, right? You get an empty meter, so if somebody is, is tampering with a meter, it gives the village an alert to that also. So it's a pretty robust.
It's awesome.
System.
What, what meters are out at the new, uh, apartments?
So the apartment, the new apartments, uh, the new apartments consist of a commercial-grade meter. Uh, they're set up a little bit differently in the aspect of, we wouldn't have the ability to shut off each individual unit, that's not how they're set up. Um, those are three-inch commercial-grade meters, so unfortunately, um, that's set up in a different way billing-wise for, uh, I believe the property management company handles the billing and they do deducts, uh, based on, on the tenant's use.
Got it, so we don't build, we don't bill the tenants?
Correct.
Yeah. I did have a question for you, um... Oh, this will come in handy, I, as we move towards monthly billing in the future, you being able to save staff time from having to drive around.
Yeah, and that's one of the things I, I guess I wanted to back up and highlight is, you know, this, this meter purchase coincides with our RFP and our program that I laid out of the, this ultimately 1,700 meters that we're, uh, hoping to attack this year. That will put us, we're roughly at about 3,000, uh, meters in place and MXUs in place currently that are Flex, FlexNet, uh, system-based. So we, our staff's recommendation is, is once we get to that 50% mark, which this will, uh, get us very close to, then it'll be advantageous for the village then to move forward with, uh, installing the collectors and, and moving forward with the fixed base system.
All right. Um, so Core and Main, I assume that they're a supplier that we worked with before. It's a quarter of a million dollars. It doesn't appear that we have received multiple bids or bid this out, we're not doing a waiver of bids, can we talk about that?
So the Core and Main is really one of the only, uh, suppliers in the area. Uh, the village has been, uh, purchasing meters from Core and Main for, uh, as long as my existence here, so, uh, seven, eight years. Different suppliers are proprietary to different meters. Uh, the village has elected, um, several years ago when we started this process, uh, to go with census products, uh, and so that's the reason that, uh, we're moving forward with Core and Main, uh, to purchase these meters.
And so, uh, Laura, we don't need to do a waiver of anything to approve? Because it's not a service, it's a product, we're buying supplies and we didn't seek any bids or get it in multiple bids or anything? Is that? And we're okay with that? Okay. All right.
Yeah, make a motion to approve?
Why is that?
Because, uh, it's, uh, the product.
The specialization of the product?
I'm sorry?
Is it the specialization of the product that allows the exemption?
There you go. Takes a second. Nope, another second.
Bottom. I think it's the bottom.
Yeah, it's the type of product that it is, um, and that it's a specialized product, and then, um, certain types of products under a threshold also don't trigger the bid the same way that other elements do, so this falls within that exemption.
And, yeah, and the scenario may be that this is our supplier for our region, which seems, um, like we don't really have another option, it's just something that we always need to be cognizant of. That, that should be a question that we ask you every single time. Okay.
Did you get a second?
I made a motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay.
Trustee Guyer? Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
Yes.
All right, that approves six zero, thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
All right, moving on, um, items for discussion this evening, we have four of them, we'll take them in order. Uh, the first item is a request for a liquor license for 1720 Douglas Road. Who would like to give an, oh, look at that.
Take care of it.
All right, and then the petitioner, if you do want to come down, Jeff will give an introduction?
Yep.
And then we'd love to hear from you.
First two items, uh, for discussion are both liquor license requests. Um, as I've told you every time, there are not currently any licenses available. Um, so the petitioner in both cases are here, tell you what it is they want to do, and then, uh, we'll ask the board, uh, do you want to move forward with it? We will continue the process, do you not want to, or is there more information you would like? So with that, I'll let the...
Hello, everyone, uh, this is George, I'm the owner of the Dairy Queen on Douglas Road, uh, and I'm here to request for the liquor license for the 1720 Douglas Road. It's the back room of the Grandma's Table, uh, and we asked for the liquor license in order to make a cafe gaming, uh, in order to make like a, a nice, like a modern cafe. Uh, and the reason is, uh, because Pete and I are family and, uh, we observed, uh, the Grandma's Table gaming place, it's very busy, and the, most of the times, people are looking for empty machine and they leave. Uh, our goal is not like to steal business from the Grandma's Table, but to support Grandma's Table. That's why I'm here today, uh, to ask for the license in order to go to the next step. We're family with Pete, we'll collaborate together, and as I said before, we try to support the Grandma's Table.
So if, um, and thanks for coming this evening. So if I'm understanding correctly, um, Grandma's Table currently has games, they're, they're maxed out on games in, in the rear there, and you would be looking to open up a totally disconnected use right next to it, or would it be connected?
There is a room behind, uh, before Pete, uh, had a banquet, a small banquet room.
Yeah.
But now it's empty. So it's going to be a separate, like, uh, place.
And I, and, sorry, I'm diving into this because I know we've had this before too, where, um, a user had the maximum number of games, whatever it is, five, and then requested additional, and then they had to be physically separated, is that how that works? If we were going to do that? Um, and to my recollection, we have not, well, I think we have actually, approved a gaming cafe before, somebody came before and there was one that we considered, um, that I don't believe moved forward.
You did approve one, but it...
It hasn't moved anywhere.
It has not gone anywhere.
Okay. And how does George feel about this? Is he okay with it?
Pete.
Pete.
Pete, yes.
Yeah, sorry.
Yes.
And this room has a separate entrance?
Of course, right, so it has a separate entrance from... I'm looking for the liquor license, class F, uh, beer and wine, because we're, I'm not looking like for troubles. I'm not looking to have a full liquor license and bring drunk people inside to maximize the profit. We're looking to make like a modern, minimal, uh, place and for new, like, generations to come to enjoy some food, going to have a limited menu with food, uh, and to enjoy their time.
Will you be making the food at this location, or will it be supplied by Grandma's Table?
Grandma's Table, yes, going to have a limited menu from the Grandma's Table.
Got it.
Plus, going to have a very few, like, snacks.
Just, and, and I asked staff these questions earlier, so I know what the, the answers are, but you own Dairy Queen, you're, you're going into, behind Grandma's Table, you're going to be the owner of that, correct? Or at least a co-owner, it's separate from, from...
Correct.
From Grandma's Table and it's a totally separate entity, it's a totally separate issue. Okay.
Yeah, you'll be leasing the space from Grandma's Table?
Yes.
Since, uh, you're Pete's nephew, right?
Exactly, yeah, we're from, from my wife's side, not like...
Yes. What was I going to even ask now? Something to do with the, what, your hours?
It's going to be six to 12, 6:00 AM to 12:00 PM. But always the hours going to adjust it according to the needs, but not more than 12:00 AM.
So 6:00 AM to midnight?
Yeah.
Is the maximum?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Maybe less, maybe less.
Yeah.
But not more.
I get you.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do we have a limitation on the liquor license, the hours? Does he need to only be open during the times that his liquor license is available, since that's the only thing that ties this business is having the liquor license? Is he limited to only be open during...
Look, I mean, obviously he can't serve alcohol except during the hours that are approved, I don't know if he can be open and just not serving.
This is unique because it's the first time we're having just a gaming facility? Is it limited to only being able to be open or operational during the sale of liquor?
I thought that when we gave the license to out on, on 30, I thought she was going to be open at like one or two. I thought, but she was going to open as early, no? Since Pete, Pete's opening early, then he's going to open.
Well, in the class, what is the earliest that the class F allow, and what's liquor sales there, chief? Good luck getting that thing on. Oh. What are the liquor hours?
Liquor hours?
Uh, depends on the class and the hours of the operation of the facility, now I'm not sure, but I believe the, um...
I can't hear, chief.
Oh, yeah, Teresa can't hear you.
You have to have a liquor license to get the gaming tables.
Correct.
And I believe the liquor license and the gaming table, uh, ride concurrently with the hours, and it's based on what our current ordinance states.
That's, okay, that's what I thought, I thought that they...
The requirement was that they had to be concurrent.
Yes, so you can't be open, if, if liquor license doesn't start until eight, you can't open at six?
Yes.
Okay.
We go according to the liquor license, uh, which is the period, uh, of the hours, and we'll open according to this.
I get you. Okay. And you're going to have your own liquor? It's not going to be coming through the Grandma's Table?
No, no, no.
Bar? It'll be a separate entity? Teresa?
Yeah, this is not, um, the liquor license that's tied to food, correct? Because it's just the beer and wine, and it's a different setup than a restaurant?
Correct. This is not the same as the restaurant license?
Okay. Well, I, I will say that, you know, I certainly appreciate all of the business that your family has in town, um, you've been here for a very long time. However, I did vote against the last time we had someone come before us and want to set up some type of gaming, um, cafe or lounge, uh, I wasn't really excited about it, and I, I believe I was the only one who voted no at that time. Might have been, uh, some of the board members here were on that board, I think, um, some of you weren't on yet. Um, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. George, I'm not, I'm not excited about it, I, I don't, um, I, I would have a really hard time supporting it. So, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to be able to support your, your request.
Thanks, Teresa. Any other comments from the board? Some direction?
I'm okay with it.
I'm not thrilled with it, but I'm okay with, you know, again, it's, you know, we've already approved one, and I don't see the reason why we couldn't or shouldn't approve another one, so I'm fine.
Yeah, no, and I, I think about that, I think about, um, what we've talked about in the past with regards to restaurants who have made a significant investment in our community, who were a restaurant and then came in for gaming, which is why Grandma's Table has gaming now. We felt like you're here as a restaurant and gaming is kind of a, you know, supplement to that. But we've also told, you know, the Orchard Stop that the two facilities he had there needed to be totally separate, because it was, seemed, what, what we're worried about is if we were to say yes knowingly that it's like, well, it's really just a way to get 10 games in the facility, then every restaurant in town could just start, you know, breaking out the back room, put, get five games in there. Not to say that everybody will do that, um, but that's what we're trying to, at least that's what I'm debating here.
I thought Orchard Stop was, the state required that.
And I'm sure, I'm sure that the state got involved too, but I know they had to close off, literally had to drywall the door, so you can't get from one to the other now. So...
Oh.
But again, it's, it's, um, I've been eating at Grandma's Table literally my entire life, so I appreciate the family's, uh, investment in the community, I don't think this is going to detrimentally impact the area. Um, it may make for an interesting conversation in the future with maybe a new, uh, venture in town, uh, but I think on the merits of this location, um, it seems fine to me. But I think on the merits of this location, it seems fine to me.
Yeah, I'm good to move forward. It's, it's separate, it's a separate room, has a separate entrance. He's leasing the room from Peter Grandma's Table. It's not, Pete's not getting the license, you know, just because we're family, it's, you know, that may work out for you, may not.
It has its own washroom facilities, correct?
Yes.
It has its own washroom facilities?
Yeah.
Yeah, it has, it's, yeah, it has its own bathroom in there, so, yeah. So I'm, I'm good to move forward.
Danny, good? Tom, good? All right. Well, thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jeff and/or the chief or somebody will work with you. We'll get this on an agenda in the future. Reach out to him. All right, item seven B this evening is a request for liquor license from Primetime Fuels at two ninety-eight Montgomery Road.
This is the gas station at Douglas and Montgomery Road. Let the petitioner come down and...
My name is Al Olley, the owner, part owner of Primetime Fuel on two ninety-eight Montgomery Road. We came here this evening to request for a liquor license for the location. We came to Montgomery in two seventeen with the hope that we are going to be an asset to the community. We have invested a lot of money so far, had hired many employees, and have been a good business in the community. Liquor license will make our business more profitable. Gas station is a tough business, but a business that every community needs. When we bought this place in two seventeen, we were promised to get, that we are going to get a liquor license. Even at that time, we took, we applied for it, went and got fingerprints. I don't know what happened, but we were quite, the city did not give it to us. But if you look around, there's a Shell gas station on thirty-four and thirty, they have liquor license. If you go to Aurora, one stop on Hill Avenue, they have liquor license. Many other gas stations have liquor licenses. So we are asking and begging if you people can approve the liquor license for our location. We have been a good neighbor. You know, I don't see a reason why, why neighboring gas stations have liquor license except two ninety-eight. So we are appealing to you people to consider issuing us a liquor license. That's what we are here for tonight.
Awesome, thank you. Did you have...
So I'll go first again. So when you had come back, come to us in two thousand seventeen, I was a, from the beginning. And I will tell you why that is the case. We have a lot of foot traffic, a lot of people walking around on Douglas Road. And they start to come into the neighborhoods and we find lots of little bottles all throughout the neighborhood. So I have been a no since the beginning. I, I know that you all came in a couple of years ago as well, so this would be your third time asking for a liquor license. And I, I'm still a no. I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. L, I am still a no. I, I cannot support adding a liquor license to your gas station. So I'm sorry, but I do appreciate your business. I know that you all put a lot of money into it and I appreciate you having your business here in town.
And just to, not to clarify, but just to reiterate what you're saying is that at that specific location, you don't believe that a liquor license is appropriate, is what you're saying?
Correct, because I, we have places right there on Douglas Road where if somebody is walking along Douglas Road, they can go in and purchase some kind of alcohol and then walk along the roadway there and, you know, walk into the neighborhoods. So I'm not in favor of adding an additional liquor license to that area.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the type of liquor license that they're, he's asking for is packaged only. I pull in, I get gas.
That's true.
I get a twelve pack of beer or a case of beer or bottle of wine or something like that. None of it's open, right? None of it is consumed on premise? There you are.
You're correct, yes, it's packaged liquor sales.
A question on the little bottles. Danny brought that up earlier. Go ahead.
Right. Six pack, twelve pack, twenty-four pack. In past, we've had some of our, in fact, I think I had the big argument with Rocco when he first came in out on, on Orchard that no little bottles.
No, we're not asking for...
Because we don't want the ones drinking like...
We're not asking for liquor bottles, we're only asking for beer and wine.
And like Teresa said, that's a problem there and no single cans because sometimes you can get those big ones and it's strictly packaged.
Seespacks.
Okay. Because at the time in two seventeen, the home pantry is behind you. And we sure didn't want everybody in a line like Teresa said, everybody having drinks. Now sixty or kicks has it down there and you're right, and then home pantry's got it and you're kinda in the middle. So I'm not a real big problem with it because we're, it's far enough away from everybody. I do have a problem like Teresa said with them, not walking in the neighborhoods, but walking on the highway once they get it, which could be a problem, but... And who are, you're not Moses, right?
I'm my partner.
Okay. What are you, if he's the owner, you're the owner too?
Well, he's my, we are partners.
Okay. All right.
You know, I know, I know many people are afraid of people walking around, but you know, people do whatever they want to do. As a good business person, you have to protect your business. You know, people drive and buy liquor and go places. Now, they come to the gas station, doesn't mean that they're going to buy beer and then start throwing bottles of beer everywhere. They can go anywhere and buy beer and drink, you know. It depends on individual. That's why we have laws, to keep laws.
I...
But we are good business people, we don't want any problem in the area. So we want to keep the place nice.
I, I understand what Teresa's saying and that, but if, we're worried about people walking down Douglas after they get alcohol or whatever, they could stop in one of the other locations and walk down Douglas. I mean, it, you can't, I, I can't vote no against this simply because, oh, I don't, he's got just as much right to serve alcohol or to, to, to sell alcohol as at one of the other locations. I mean, I think last time I voted yes to allow it, so...
I think the reason too was you had a small place and you didn't have a lot of room for a lot, so you weren't gonna handle, you know, twelve different kinds of beers or anything like that.
Just enough to keep, keep alive, you know.
Okay. Chief, how about, we, we never had any problems that I know of, major problems in the pantry when I was there. Have you had any major problems at that corner?
We do have a, a little bit higher ratio of calls volume there. Down the street, of course, you know, is the other pantry that we've had a lot of problems. We actually petitioned to reduce their liquor license on the weekends down to one o'clock. I'm not saying the same thing would happen to his establishment, but that area has been known to have a few problems.
Well, and, and this location is literally two hundred feet from residential. I mean, it's just a different, the reason, so there's a complicated history in this region of Douglas and Montgomery, which is where I grew up. I mean, my parents used to live over here. It's, it's densely populated, you know, we have the Douglas Road corridor, but once you get to Montgomery Road, I'm looking at my phone, it's densely populated. I mean, you're in a neighborhood, there's a lot, there's more of pedestrian traffic, I think in that area than, than some of the others. And we don't want to, and certainly you don't want to, have a situation where this entices crime to, to pick up or anything that, to bring any problems to your store. So we have, on a few occasions, turned down a request at this location. Question I had for Chief was a Class M license, I know you, you've indicated that you wanna sell beer and wine and that's, that's what you've indicated, does the Class M strictly prohibit to only beer and wine or...
I don't believe so, I think it's just packaged liquor.
No, it doesn't. It's alcohol.
Yeah.
It doesn't limit size of bottles, just so you know.
That was, that was my second question. So are these allowed, the little guys allowed?
No.
No.
They're not.
Are they allowed anywhere?
It depends on the license.
So like at Binny's, they probably have, because they got everything?
I believe so, yes.
Yes, I get you. Okay.
What about the hours? Is this, if he, I don't know what hours he wanna do, but we sure don't want him selling at one o'clock at night.
No, whatever, whatever the law states in Montgomery, that's what we're going to do. Whatever you put said that we're going to open from ten to twelve, we are by by the law. We're not going to go out against, for the city of Montgomery State. So if we're going to be open from seven to eleven or twelve, that's what we're going to do.
Chief, what is the Class M hours, do you know?
I believe the same as restaurant, you can't sell alcohol on the weekdays after one or not before six, on the weekends it's two. Friday's...
And is that mimic Aurora? I know we talked about that in the past.
Well, Aurora's one. So that's why we asked for the pantry to be reduced to one o'clock because the problem we had was everybody was coming down Aurora because we were an hour later than they were.
Right. I was in college, I remember that, so, not there, but...
Can we, if our license, if our, if he's going for an M license and our M license is two o'clock, can we just change our M license to one o'clock?
Change it?
I'd like to, I'd like to talk to the liquor commissioner, but I defer that to Lauren.
I mean, because if, if, you're right, if, if the issue is Aurora coming into Montgomery to get alcohol and then walk down the street and all that sort of thing, if their license stops at one o'clock, let's just make ours stop at one o'clock. Now there, there's no reason to come to Montgomery to get liquor.
Right.
Or, or alcohol to go back.
I totally get it. It's a rational thought process, but we have businesses with Class Ms now that would be impacted. And I'd be willing to bet that they really like that last hour. It might be a little bit...
Well, that was my next question.
Perturbed by that.
Yeah.
I'm assuming we do.
And I always think rationally.
I just, I'm concerned about this location, I have been, I've, you know, like I said, I grew up right near here, right at the...
Did we not turn down home pantry when the, home pantry moved? But did not the owner of that building come back and ask us for one as well? The old, I believe that he did.
Yes.
It was a different owner.
It was different. Because we made it very clear that when you move your liquor license, you, we are, we were required to do so more or less by the state because it was in the same region. We couldn't say no. We said, listen, building owner, that liquor license moved, it doesn't mean tomorrow you're gonna get a new liquor license. Our concern is the overall...
Saturation.
Atmosphere, yeah, and saturation on the Douglas Road corridor. I've said numerous meetings that, you know, thank you, sir, I believe that we're, we're very well served in that area. And we're existing condition, having problems at a little further on down. Knowing that we just talked about Grandma's Table with their, you know, gaming facility, which to me is different, this isn't buying and leaving, it's a different situation. So it's just, I mean, as you can tell, I don't, I don't know that anybody that's spoken is, is one hundred percent comfortable with the idea. I tend to lean more with Teresa on this one that I just don't think, and it has nothing to do with, with you or the business, it is strictly the location right at that intersection. I just don't think it's a good idea.
But Mr. Mayor, if you go there, I don't think we have too many traffic. There's a red light there, so there's no reason for people to be walking around the area. If you give us the liquor license, if we violate it within six months, take it away from us.
I know, but we can't do that. We, it's really, once a liquor license is issued, we don't have that really authority without, because we're taking something from you. So there's court, there's things, we can't, it's not something we can do.
Well, so far, I don't see, I don't think we have any problem there. We haven't had any problem there for four years. So I don't see why we're going to have trouble because we have the liquor license. People come and buy the beer, they go home. They are not going to buy the beer to stay there and drink on the street.
Is there a license that only allows the sale of beer and wine and not other liquor?
For a gas station?
I don't think we have a packaged liquor license that's strictly beer and wine.
We have a license in Aurora location, there's a packaged liquor, in Galena, next to McDonald's. There's a packaged liquor. Only we can buy the six packs or twenty-four packs. It's morning, six o'clock to...
Yeah, where, sorry, Teresa.
You need to, you need to come to the microphone?
Yeah. So you're indicating that there's, you have another location on Galena?
Aurora, yeah.
In Aurora?
Yeah, Aurora, next to the McDonald's.
Gotcha.
The time, only for the beer and wine and six pack and twenty-four packs. No loose cans, no loose bottles, nothing like that. And, yeah, we're pretty good, morning six o'clock to eleven o'clock, Monday to Thursday and Friday, Saturday, six o'clock to twelve o'clock and Sunday, morning ten o'clock to evening eleven o'clock.
Okay.
I get what he's trying to do because you, you wanna, if, if, if you wanna to make it convenient, so if somebody wants to stop and get gas...
Yes.
And a case of beer, you want them to do it at your location, not another location. The pantry does not have a license now, is what you're saying, they're on the corner. They all sell gas, but they don't, the old home, there's no liquor license there.
Correct.
How about the gas station further down on Montgomery Road?
It does not have one.
It does not have one.
No.
So what gas station in that area? Is there any gas station in that area that has a liquor license now?
Shell on US thirty and Douglas Road, they do have.
That's Oswego.
That's Oswego. So you would be the only, they would be the only gas station in that area that would have the ability to stop, get gas, grab a six pack, baggage hubs and, and go home. So I understand what he's trying to do.
Yeah, I mean...
You're trying to make it convenient so that people wanna stop at your gas station to spend the dollars there.
Actually, last, last past year, one and a half year, I'm suffering too much because the, because the coronavirus pandemic.
Yeah.
There's nobody, there's not moving anything. There's no flow, customers flow, nothing. You know, gas, we don't make no money. I can't even pay my mortgage. I just want to ask, even if we don't make much beer percentage either profit, but the only thing is we want to see the flow, rotation of the things.
I get you. And it's, it's worth noting that we're not trying to, really don't wanna dive too much into your business operation, right? It's, it's your business, you know, my concern is the atmosphere of the entire area and I'm not concerned based on the limited information I know about your business that you would, you know, make the situation worse. But I think everyone in this room knows that late hours, beer and wine sales can attract issues late at night. And I never do this or put the chief on the spot, but I mean, generally speaking, in this, in this location, would you, would this create some heartburn for you or do you not see it as an issue?
I just know from the retail sales we have down the street, that does create a lot of issues for us.
Yes, and I shouldn't say this publicly, but I'm not going into that business down the street because I've heard of issues, you know, people have reported those. So it's drawing a crowd, you know, that's not fitting with, with what we're trying to do in, here in Montgomery. Not to say that you would do that, but this locate, this entire corridor feels that way. Tom, what are your thoughts?
A little bit of everything. Torn, obviously we wanna support the local business who's done a nice job and been in the community. I don't know, Dan's kinda driving at, is there an opportunity to do just a packaged license liquor? Which would seem to me to be, be more of the compromise middle ground. You get rid of the Minis and the Lucys where you're just, you're just doing the, the packaged. I, I wouldn't be opposed to that, that process.
And that's what you've indicated, your desire is, would that be something that you'd be interested in looking at?
Yes.
If we could look into that? What do you guys think?
Of creating a whole new liquor license specifically geared towards like the gas station?
Classification.
Classification, okay. And you guys are okay with that?
What they said about Aurora.
The MP. M with packaged only.
Right. So Chief, Tony?
I'm pretty sure this is a Class M license. It's already established by ordinance.
Well, but that has alcohol. This is just beer and wine. Well, but that has alcohol. This is just beer and wine.
Right?
Yes.
Right. They just want beer and wine. So.
So class M has liquor.
Correct.
Okay. So Sonya, do you have?
Class M allows all liquor for gas stations.
Got it.
You know, the second gas station must give the wine package.
So what? No, we can hear you. Doug can't. That's perfect. So why don't we? Go ahead, Teresa.
I said I can't.
Okay. She just reiterated what the chief had just said about class M licenses, all liquors for gas stations.
So we want an M light.
So, yeah, so why don't we do this? Staff will investigate that what you're talking about with Aurora. Assuming that, actually, we'll just bring that back for for a discussion with the board at a future meeting. Sound good? The idea of of looking at a different type of liquor license that meets your needs, but also makes, you know, the community feel comfortable that we're not inviting, you know, these more of these in town. Because we need we need, in my opinion, we need a lot less of these.
No, no setting. Even though my other location, I have the EF
Yep.
license. That means EF, they say in the brackets, packaged liquor plus wine.
Got it. Okay. Well, Debbie will reach out to you guys when this is on for discussion at a future meeting and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
Could that license cut the hours down?
I think I was going to add that to our conversation for for that.
Because you wouldn't mind if it goes down to eleven?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Well, yeah, and let's look at it holistically, see what Aurora is for that same type of thing in town. Again, we're not trying to over restrict you at all. We're just trying to make it safe for everyone.
Is this something, if we look at a new liquor license, is this something we can get at a future meeting relatively quickly?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, move on to item. Let's see, we go an hour and a half. Anybody need a break? We're feeling pretty good. I have feeling the next two are going to take just a little bit.
Probably.
Let's take five minutes if we can. Let's go ahead and call the meeting back to order. And the next item on the agenda is seven C Mayfield Drive Traffic Calming Follow-Up Discussion. Engineer Walters.
Thank you, President Brawley. So this is a follow-up of our past Mayfield discussion. We were asked to come back with specific recommendations as alternatives for traffic calming or traffic volume reduction. So we'd like to go through those items. So we have a recap of the February presentation. And then our proposed traffic calming options, next steps, and then any questions that might be there. So again, to talk about our information that we have available to us from the numerous speed studies that have been out there.
Hey, real quick, I'm not even sure how that's possible, but the presentation that Teresa's looking at is not advancing. Somebody explain that. No, think about that. You have it open twice? I'm at a loss.
No, we gotta work out this stuff.
Yeah.
Is there?
So you.
You know what? I wonder, what are you looking at right in front of you?
I'm looking at the same thing that's up there.
Yeah, another screen is being shared. So unshare and then share again. And then when you select it, select the one that looks like speed traffic. Yeah, number two. This is it was it was a time like this when we banned the use of pie charts at board meetings for a while there.
So this is why this this is why you can't see it because you have to go to screen two to advance it. All right.
Share it again. Share the one that's on that screen.
Yeah, you should find a way. Should I do share share two or the?
Yeah.
Because this one doesn't work. So do I have to do screen two?
Because whatever you're looking.
If I share this one, will it work? Maybe. Teresa, can you see this now?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Okay, can't explain it. So this is a recap of the traffic studies that we have done over the years from two thousand eight to two thousand nineteen. Every time we look at a traffic situation, one of the things that we tell the residents is we understand that we're only out there for some period of time. We're not there out there twenty-four seven. So it's not that something else can't be going on. But right now, what we're seeing in the speed studies that have been done is that we don't see a statistical speeding problem on Mayfield. Again, that's not to say that there's not speeding that we're not seeing, but from the studies that have been done and the traffic details that have been done, we're not seeing the evidence of it. But what we have indicated in the past is that we do see a volume issue. There's more volume on Mayfield, I think, than folks expected. And I think that is why that they see more cars going above the speed limit. So that's where we're at right now. The again, the statistics indicate that majority of the cars are going less than, you know, thirty-five miles an hour. The eighty-five percentile speed was thirty miles per hour, which is generally what we would set a speed limit on a street for. That's the speed that people are comfortable traveling on that roadway. We did set the speed limit at twenty-five because we were authorized to do so following I dot protocol for establishing speed limits. And that allows us to have a more aggressive enforcement policy. So I think that that decision was correct. But if you were just looking at straight speed studies, the eighty-five percentile is thirty miles an hour. The options that we reviewed at the last time, we were with the talking about this with the board back in February, were the chicanes, the choker, the center islands, raised intersections, speed humps, speed tables, one-way street and full road closure. So what we've done is sat down with staff, talked about what options we thought would best work, and we've got some alternatives that we'd like you to consider. First item is a full road closure. This is an option that we believe would affect vehicle volume reduction. What we envision is a a closure of the road, but an area where emergency vehicles and other authorized vehicles could still pass through. Now, we recognize that this can be something that people can violate, understood. But we, you know, with traffic enforcement, it would be an expensive violation if you did get caught. So the significance here is is that, you know, we would post the street as no outlet on both sides and then, you know, so you would not be able to use it as a cut through unless you wanted to violate the law. We did look at going to more aggressive, you know, ways to to close the road, but we felt like it was important to have emergency vehicles, police vehicles, snowplows, school buses, be able to to maintain the route. So that's the reason we went that direction. This will definitely have an impact to the residents. So if if you're in the townhomes and you want to go to Aldi's, you're going to have to drive out to to Concord and on to Galena and then come over on Orchard. So and I think that's maybe a theme that everyone should keep in mind is whatever measures we take, they're going to have secondary impacts. So other people may be inconvenienced. You may solve the volume problem, but you may inconvenience some of the other residents. So you have to keep that in mind. And we're not sure that this will have a significant impact beyond what we see for vehicular speed. But again, we don't think that that was necessarily an issue. So if we can reduce volume, I think that that it would probably effectively have a reduction in in the perceived speed limits out there. So that's alternate one.
I can ask a quick question.
Sure.
So that alternate one, so that would prohibit traffic in both directions or just one?
Correct.
Both directions. Okay.
Yep. It'd be a full closure. We debated on whether or not to go to a one-way roadway, but we felt like the two-way or the full closure was a better alternative. And as this exhibit shows, the location that we're proposing would be the interface between the single family and the multifamily areas. So.
I have a question. Why wouldn't we just close it at Concord?
So if you were on, I guess, you know, I suppose it could be closed at any location. Again, we need to have just the ability to, you know, get emergency vehicles through it.
Sure. And I I get that, but I as far as lane closure, I think it would make more sense at Concord and Mayfield than right in the middle. Because you're still you're still solving a lot of the traffic flow problem that you're solving, I think, the traffic flow problem all along Mayfield. And the people who should be taking Concord out to Galena and turning are now doing that. You're forcing the people who are in the townhomes that are most of the way to Aldi to go around. And it just it make it seems to me like it makes more sense to close it at Concord, but.
I'm sure, well, I'm sure that depending on where you live, you'd have a very strong opinion one way or the other if you were getting cut off. We could debate that, but let's just rock and roll on the rest of it.
Not just going into Aldi in that way. If you're trying to go to Lakewood Creek.
Yeah.
Right.
Those those students attend Lakewood.
You're now going all the way down.
Which brings me to the so the authorized vehicles that we're discussing, I'm assuming would be public works vehicles, police, ambulance, fire truck, school buses?
That's what we understand. We we believe we can designate them and we'd also probably designate garbage trucks as well. Because it's difficult for those vehicles to turn around at the end of a dead end.
Okay. I just I wanted to because that would be a detriment to those people going to Lakewood Creek School to have to loop all the way around.
Understood. Yeah.
And if I could, real quick, just to answer Steve's question, because I've been out here and I've looked at this several times. The problem with closing a Concord Drive is when people come through and they get to that the road is closed, now they're stuck. Now they have to pull into somebody's driveway to turn around. Or if there's cars parked there, they'll have to back up. And it's the same with the transition between the single family and the duplexes is when you come down from the single family and you get there, now you're stuck. And the only way you can turn around is in somebody's driveway. I I would think that there's a there's a neck down already right there by Woforia that it necks downs into two lanes already. I would think that would be the place, if we were going to do this, to do it because then if people are coming from Orchard, they'll see it and they can just duck into a business and turn around through a business and not a residential area. And if they're coming the opposite way on Mayfield and they see us closed, then they could just turn down Amsterdam and go around the block. My concern is if we get people where they in a situation, they have to turn around.
There'll be a no outlet sign posted early on on both.
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah, either either way.
They'd have a chance to turn around before they got there.
Go all the way in and have to turn around either way. Right. I'm just concerned that if they get to where they want, you know, they want to obey and not go through, they're going to have to do their turnaround in somebody's driveway.
Yeah, or you could do a hammer. I mean, you could figure it out. They could be a hammerhead or they could just violate it and get a ticket. But let's.
If you're going, if you're you close it where it's got it located and Doug's driving down Concord and he turns down Mayfield and he forgets it. It's closed there and you see police vehicles and you see that the roadway is open. Doug's get he's just going to keep going, you know? What what's going to stop you? You're going to turn around, go all the way back around to go? He's just going to keep going.
So.
Yeah, and that would go in either direction.
By the way, when we present this, whatever the options are to the residents, this is just the tip of the iceberg of the comments that we're going to get.
Right.
But everybody knows that. Also, Mr. Zimmerman, I can see that you're commenting. I'm not reading it right now. I would I would I'm I want to know what you think, but providing public comment at this point in the meeting is not helpful. We probably shouldn't be allowed to make public comments there. But I do care about your opinion. It's just not I can't read it right now. Let's continue with the presentation because this is one of the three options to do a are you calling it a partial closure?
Well, we would call this a full closure because if you're not an authorized vehicle, you would have you would not be able to get through. So this would be effectively making the road into a dead end.
Putting it halfway down seems better than clipping it off at the at either end. Because my worry is if we get all the way through this and people are still witnessing speeding going down this road and it's just their own neighbors going to their house and back down to Concord or vice versa, then we will have accomplished nothing. Rock and roll.
Okay.
Pete, real quick, on all these options, did you take the consideration on losing parking spots? Because this parking on these streets are not real good and and Matt's right. It seems every time we give somebody a a speed thing to do or the chief goes out, it's always their neighbors are the ones speeding. Not me going through, but one of their neighbors. So as long as you took the parking spots, because I know that was a big ass.
We did, and that comes up in this. You'll see it now in the next few alternatives, the things that we were concerned with. So the next one we looked at was a roadway choker and there'll be multiple locations, but it does slow the speed at the pinch point. And these would be a little more exaggerated than maybe some of the ones we've used in the past. There'd be no limit for the emergency vehicle access. We are concerned that it will reduce some of the on-street parking. We tried to minimize it and you'll see that when we go through this. And then it will not have, we don't believe, an impact on on volume, but it would slow speed down. The locations then for this, we've got four locations picked. And we tried to locate them as best we could in areas to minimize the impact of parking, but there will be some impact on them on the parking. But that was a concern. And I think when you consider these types of alternatives, you have to be keeping that in mind. We tried to keep, you know, one of the reasons we didn't put the traffic chicane or the traffic neck down in the townhome area was because of the premium on parking for sure in that area. So it's it's, you know, before you get into the townhome area and then as you're entering the townhome area. So that's the reason we spaced them there. And again, you know, you can have an honest debate on where where those should be located. But these are these are the locations where we thought we could put them in with minimal amount of impact to parking, not to say we won't have some impact on parking. So you know, that's that's what that's what this alternative is about. The next alternative would be kind of the speed hump or we're calling it raised crosswalks. And what we're trying to do here is to have a speed hump, but also try to enhance pedestrian safety by putting these at the intersections so that you get at least a multiple benefit. So rather than having a mid-block speed table, we'd put the speed tables at the intersections to make sure people slow down at the intersections. We don't have, there's not good information as to whether this will have an impact on volume diversion. I would think it would, just common sense would tell us that. I I sure wouldn't want to drive a roadway that had multiple speed tables in it, but we don't know that for sure. We do know that there's an impact to snow plowing and and emergency vehicles because they have to slow down and the plows are going to have to move their blade. So that's a bit of an issue. But again, wanted to be thorough in our investigation here. So in terms of location, what we tried to do was located on the on the T intersections. So if you can think about this, if you're coming out of, if you're coming out of one of the subdivisions, we put it on the west side because the predominant direction you're going to be turning is right or east, right? So at least you wouldn't have to go over every speed bump if you were coming out of the subdivision. Now, if you're coming out of one of the other, I can't read the street names on the screen, but, you know, you'd still have to go over one, the speed hump, but you wouldn't have to do them all. Now, if you're going to cut through, you'd have to go through all four or all five of the locations. And if you, you know, if you were going from Aldi's to the townhomes, you'd have to traverse three of those to get back home or four, depending on where your, you know, your home was located. Now, we know from the literature that people that have to travel these roads every day grow tired of speed tables. And what the advice we were given from the folks in other communities is that you have to get a large percentage of buy-in if you're going to go to speed tables because you're going to get a lot of complaints from the residents that have to use these every day. But they would be effective, I think, in slowing traffic. Now, whether the people try to speed in between the speed humps is also another concern. But, you know, they do provide you know, relief as you have to slow down for them. So that's the third alternative is to go with the speed tables in the form of at the pedestrian crosswalks. the speed tables in the form of, at the pedestrian crosswalks. And I think you could have another debate as to whether you would need them at every location, but again, we're just trying to, you know, propose what we thought would be a thorough and effective way to, to slow traffic. So. The fourth alternative would be to not do any improvements out there. That would have obviously no impact and no additional cost, but it'd have no impact on the volume or reduction of the vehicle's speed. So every time we look at a alternative, we usually look at the no action alternative as part of the, the suite of options that we evaluate. So those were the three alternatives that we, or the four options that we evaluated and then the fourth being the, the no action alternative. So where we're at in the process is we've analyzed the past data, we've proposed some traffic calming measures and what we think would be the likely next step would be to go out for public outreach and get comments from the surrounding residents to see what they think, which ones they prefer, you know, one, two, three, or four, or some, you know, modification thereof, as you guys have discussed tonight. And then once we had that information, we would come back and talk further with the village board. So, you know, in these COVID times, it's a little more challenging to get public input clearly, but we think that we could set up a link on the village website that would show the proposed options and information. We would notify the residents by either direct mail using the water billing software or by door hanger, which we've done in the past for road projects. And we could do that for the entire, you know, Mayfield area. And then we would ask the, the residents to, we, you know, set up a survey that, to find out if there's a preferred alternative or to get whatever comments we could get from them. And then we would possibly have to go back and, you know, with a second survey, if we narrowed it down to one or two alternatives that were more preferable by the, by the residents. And then once we had, I think, a little more clear information, we'd come back and discuss it with village board. We could also have in-person meetings. We haven't shut the door on that, but it's just, there are limits on the amount of people that you can have in a meeting. I think we're still at 50, I believe. So, you know, there's the potential limit there. And we may, we're debating right now, honestly, whether we should have a public open house for the infrastructure road program that we do every year or not. And so we're still willing certainly do that, but we, you know, we would set up a specific page and a specific area where residents could go and comment. And obviously, we would have to track the voters so that we knew that we were getting, you know, discreet or unique votes and not just one person voting, you know, 10 times or whatever. So, you know, there's challenges there, but we think we can come up with a system that would allow us to get the public input.
One of my questions, if you notify residents either by direct mail or door hanger, you can pick the specific streets that you want. Because if someone's over on, off of Lakewood Creek and they use this as a cut-through, I'm not, I'm not really interested in their opinion.
Or a public roadway.
We're only gonna notify the residents in the Mayfield and the townhome subdivision.
Okay, alright.
Anybody that's in these two.
Right. And we would physically, obviously, we would physically go out and put the door hangers on everybody's door. And whether that would have a door hanger with an explanation and a QR code that they would use to get to the right place to, to vote, we haven't worked out all the logistics on that. Or it could be the same thing with the help of the water department. We could target all the addresses, you know, in the, the single family homes, whoops, and the multifamily home. So it would definitely be targeted.
I just want to clarify something that when we did this speed study, because people inherently like to say, well, of course, everybody went slow. There was a cop sitting there. But several of these speed studies were done covertly, correct, Chief?
Right.
I think Armando told us that. They were done with the, one that's not the speed trailer. It's the one that no one knows is there.
You are correct.
Yeah, the jammer device, yes. They were done, and it concealed there.
Correct. So, so that the data is not flawed because police were there. And in reference to some of the, about the speed versus volume, and we don't have, I mean, based on the data, 54% of the cars are going 26 to 30 miles an hour. The speed limit's 25. So it's not a speed problem as much as if you live there and have kids it is, but it's a volume problem for sure.
Yeah, I think one of the things that Pete kind of alluded to at the beginning is that the, the percentage isn't necessarily with the excessive speed, but the volume of cars make that small percentage a significant portion of cars traveling that little roadway at a high rate of speed daily. But by these percentages, that's what, you're 350 cars traveling above the, the speed limit down that road daily? I mean, on average? That's your house with your three-year-old up front? Yeah, that's a speeding problem. Even, you know, it, it's a matter of perspective. That, that volume really is, I think, what we gotta drive down. So whatever the measures are to drive the volume down inherently reduces that speed issue.
When I, when I sat on Mayfield and did radar, and I think by definition, there were, anything over 25 was considered speeding, you know, by definition. I want to say like 52, 53% of the vehicles were speeding. And I, I noticed that it was, there were a couple issues. First, there's a cut-through issue. There's a volume issue. And by closing down the roadway, wherever you close it down, that, that may close the volume issue, but that doesn't solve the speeding issue. And that's why I like the idea of speed tables, but also two of the worst speeders that I saw, one was like 35, the other one was 36 or 37. They lived on Mayfield because I saw them pull into their driveway. So there's two issues. And I, I think that you have options here that will solve both issues if they're kind of used in combination with each other. And I like the fact that you can pinpoint who you want to talk to because I'm, I'm, I don't really care the opinion of someone who lives on Lakewood Creek about Mayfield Drive. It doesn't matter to me.
So a couple of things, and I'm with you on that. I have a random question. So did you look at, I guess, when you looked at the traffic that goes down this road, it, you know, in 2019, it was 2,200 cars. Is that, I mean, that's both directions, right? Is there one direction that's more predominantly traveled than another?
I believe in the detailed studies and I'd have to go back and double check, but my recollection is, is pretty, it was pretty even distribution from, and I can double check that. Mayor.
Yeah, no, that's fine. And then 2,200 cars, based on, because I've done this in traffic studies, based on the number of homes there, what would you expect to see on that road generated?
Yeah, good question. I.
I didn't expect you to have that answer.
Yeah, I can.
But, I mean, because we always generate, oh, you know, our project's gonna generate this much traffic. And it's not gonna be 2,200. It's gonna be less than that. So my question is, could you, or did you look at banning a left turn from Concord onto Mayfield?
I was gonna suggest.
I was, that's why I was hoping it's a one-way thing. People are getting, like, they're dugging, they're doing the dug. And if you banned that turn and people followed it, and that's a whole, I know Mr. Zimmerman comments on that, I'm with you. Enforcement's a whole nother ballgame here, honestly. Maybe that cuts down half. And half is a good start. All of that to tell you, we're getting ready to pave this road. And like, we're gonna start in a month?
Well, and I, honestly, we talked about that. We think we can add any of these alternatives. We, we, a couple of things. If we make a decision in a timely fashion, we can still make it happen this year without any problem. We can work with the contractor to stage the construction. So we're not worried about that. But let's just say that we don't come to a consensus this year for whatever reason, or it's late. We can come in there either late as a separate activity and, and do the work over the existing paving because you're just adding asphalt on top, for example, or cutting in extra curbs. So I think we can make it happen no matter what, really. And if, worst case, if it got delayed a year, you know, we would just do it as a part of a next year's program. So while, you know, the, the impotence was to try to get it done this year, which we'd still like to do, obviously, you know, I think we have some flexibility, but we're gonna try to make it happen.
And I like, yeah, I like that there's a defined timeline so it doesn't, you know, stretch into next year. That there's an urgency here and I think that might hopefully impact your response rates. Because that was my second point is, we've seen the data and we've actually seen the ADT on this road relative to like, let's say Briar Cliff and some of our other, like, minor collectors or whatever the, whatever they're rated. And it's high, but it's not.
Right.
Out of the realm. It's what you would expect.
It's very similar to what we see on Briar Cliff.
So the data suggests that, doesn't, the data does not suggest anything glaring. So if we are going to spend whatever it is, I saw 50 grand in one of those, and maybe I shouldn't speak for the board, I would consider any one of those options from a cost standpoint as plausible. None of them were way out of whack. We, we can totally afford that in the road program. But what I would want is, kind of like the, some of the IDOT stuff, is a response rate, is for residents to pick something. Because we know that no matter what we do, everybody's gonna be mad here, but we've had folks that are very concerned, we've listened, and if they decide a certain, it's not gonna be a majority. But if we get a certain response rate that we're comfortable with, I'd pull the trigger on it.
Can I ask you a question? And Pete, maybe you know or can find out the answer. When sound balls go up, those are residential decisions, correct? How does IDOT go about getting, because they don't just.
They set a limit of 50%. If they get at least 50% response, that's good enough for them.
Okay.
What, what, what is suggested is that if you only get, you, you're better off in this case because of the, to try to get a higher percentage, especially if you're putting in speed tables. Because you've got a lot of people that are gonna be impacted by those every day, you know?
What would, and I'm not even saying this to be funny, like, if we were to set out a road closure now and like, do a temporary road closure right where we're thinking about it, could we do that?
We could. I mean, we could use Jersey barriers, I think, to, to effectively monument the, the closure location.
Now that I say that, I think that's what got Chris Christie in a lot of problems.
Mark is looking very nervous back there.
Honestly, so, and I'm not suggesting that we do that. It's not even a joke, but like, we, we could if we wanted to disclose that in the near term while we're having these conversations. My concern is going into spring. And I run, and that's my route when I run. I mean, there's a lot of cars down there.
Yeah, we, I mean, one of the steps, once we got through this initial presentation, if you guys were okay with the general direction here, we were gonna also get more input from fire and, and fire in the school district to make sure that they were okay. But now that we know that we can pass the buses and the fire department through the, you know, potential road closure location, location, I think they will be less concerned. But, but we're definitely gonna do that as well.
A question for either Peter or the chief. What would the fine be if someone were to go through that?
And is it each time or, just kidding?
Well, this is being a traffic control class. If we put up signage and everything else, that's a $120 citation. To start, if we go to local ordinance, you're talking $50 to.
Oh, we gotta make it more than that.
But it does escalate, right? If you're a repeat offender.
Sure, we can, we can make that happen.
Right.
It's an expensive pizza.
It is.
Yeah, it is.
So can you talk through a little bit of, I mean, I do kind of want to light a fire under this pretty quickly so that we can move forward with our project this year. Does it make sense? I know you mentioned posting it. It seems like a passive way to get the information out. Doing the mailer obviously is a must. And did you give some thought to hosting a town hall meeting on Zoom? I've had some success doing those.
Sure.
Where you're the host and you have to approve comments. It's messy, but, you know, democracy is messy. I mean, you want their comments. We want folks to, to opine on this. And maybe that group settles on two and that's what goes out to a vote and, and a, you know, that kind of thing.
And I think that's, that's part of it, too, is that you're.
Go ahead, Teresa.
Go ahead, whoever was talking, go ahead.
Hey Teresa, you're hard to hear. So if you can turn up your microphone a little bit, we would stop interrupting you. Danny, go ahead.
All right, if you got four different ideas and you have a meeting, I've seen these meetings, you're gonna have four different people. I'd rather have us that you see what you get back on all the, the mailers and, and the tags and then see what that is first before you have a meeting. You have a meeting, you can have a couple guys that are really loud, just take over, intimidate the other neighbors. I mean, I've seen that too. But like the raised crosswalk looks nice with the stripes because it does help walking across. But I'm gonna tell you, those things, I've hit it with a bus where there isn't any stripes and I'll tell you, they jar your teeth because you didn't know they were there in the snow. And the same way with people. People are, they're gonna follow a bus right on through and that, if that's stopped, they'll follow the bus right on through, say, I didn't see the sign. I mean, it's just.
And people will violate this, for sure.
Right. Aldi's will violate, but it's, that raised crosswalks, the only difference is it's got nice striping, but boy, I'll tell you, those things are a bummer to, Downer Place did that.
No, I know.
But you were right on one thing. People leave that street. They went either Garfield or Galena because they got tired of hitting those bums. Because if you hit them right, boy, you can really, it, it turns flat, but then all of a sudden, there's a drop and boy, you, you really jar your car.
My concern is with the surveying, and I think it's great because we, what we need is we need to hear from every house that lives in this, these two subdivisions.
Not just Mayfield?
No.
Right, the whole subdivision.
The whole subdivision. Everybody that lives in both of those subdivisions. But the question becomes, how do you get Mark Wolf to vote and not vote 20 times?
Well, I.
This is, this is a critical piece that we don't have one person voting 10 times. So how do you, and especially if you do it electronically.
Right. And one way, we, and again, we haven't sat down and sorted out every possible alternative, but one way to do it is when you send a mailer, for example, or you send the mail, you send them a code. And when they go online and vote, they enter their code and that confirms that it's from that household. And then it limits it to one vote. That's one way that we would think about approaching it. There might be more streamlined options, we're not sure, but that's one way we could approach it.
So we could debate these issues or these different options for a while. And I know we all have opinions on it. We also have education and background on it too. And history, I mean, did anybody on the board see any of the four options that you don't like, that we don't want to present to the, to the residents as an option? I felt like they're gonna have strong opinions.
The none.
I think four comes off. The do nothing isn't an option.
Okay.
At a minimum, something needs to happen, whether it's signage, no left turn, younger men out there every day in a yellow vest. I don't, something, we need to do something.
Yeah.
Well, let's just.
I'd like that to be at least something for if one, if there's some house that says, I like it the way it is.
The way it is.
So the choker, does that choke it down to one lane, two lanes?
It would still be two lanes, but it would go down to make it so that it's like 20 feet wide so that you'd have two 10-foot lanes, which is still meets the criteria for lanes, but obviously people, and, you know, so it's still acceptable, but you are uncomfortable with two-way traffic going at a high speed. And as the idea, so you would slow down when you got to that choker. You could, you know, it's just like a narrow bridge.
And that would still allow the 20-foot, 20-foot fire lane.
Yeah, it's still, you know, yes, it'll pass the emergency vehicles. I mean, it has the, the least impact on, you know, public works and fire, I would say.
So we'll just, well, staff will come back with their communication plan, how to push this out, what the process is, how it works, right? Next couple, two weeks, three weeks, whatever it takes.
I'm curious what the distance is now, because you mentioned about the chokers.
Yeah.
Because I, again, I travel that way.
We've heard.
Not anymore.
A lot.
I'm the guy that goes 20 and has six cars behind him, you know, ready to pass them. So you're welcome for that. But what's the, I mean, it's pretty consistent that there's not two cars passing each other. You're constantly jogging and waiting for the oncoming car. So when there's a car on the left and the right, what's that distance? Because if, if that's the distance for the choke, that's there now.
Correct.
That's there every day now when there's cars on the left and right side. So if that's the 20-foot choke, the choke's not gonna work because I'm telling you now, just going down there, you, you're taking your life in your hands if you try to pass a car when there's a car on the left and a car on the right and you're both going. There's a good chance you may clip mirrors because it's, it's pretty tight now. That, my concern, that's my only concern with the choking, is the residents have actually implemented that themselves by parking their car. Is the residents have actually implemented that themselves by parking their cars on both sides of the street to force that. And if that's where the choke is down to, I don't know that it changes anything that's not already there.
Right.
Naturally.
And that was my point, yeah.
I would say Doug, the only thing it does is it, there are times when the cars are not parked there. When you have a choker, you always have the obstruction, right? So that's the real only difference. I don't disagree. Because honestly, parking on streets is a traffic calming measure.
Right.
You know, so it's going to slow tr, I, I know when I drive that road, I drive slow because of that. There's cars coming and park cars. It affects how I travel on that roadway. So that's really the only thing. It just assures that you will have a, a choke point, not, you know, that for some reason cars are not parked there.
Teresa, did you have comments?
Yeah, I.
Yeah, I, I have several comments actually and a couple of questions. So I want to say is, whatever it is that we end up doing. There's always going to be somebody angry and not happy with what we've done. We've seen that in the past. Decisions and had what we thought was a good majority of people saying this is what they wanted. And sure enough, the next day after a meeting, it could be that quickly that we hear from somebody who says, well, why did you do that? So the, the point is we're never going to make everybody happy. I, I think we just have to accept that off the, off the top of this. The second thing is that I wanted to ask if those are, if there's a way we could do maybe a combination. Excuse me, a combination of these options. To, to really try to, you know, accomplish some of the goals that we want to in various areas of the road. So Pete, is that something we can look at?
Absolutely. So you're saying maybe do an option where we use some of the pedestrian speed tables? And maybe some of the chokers in conjunction, you know, on the same option.
And I mean, I, I still think, you know, that was my initial thought was if we were going to. Block off this road and you know, like Doug has said several times, it is a public roadway. If we close it off. You know, that, that's a problem because that's, the taxpayers have paid for that. The taxpayers from across Montgomery has paid for that. So I, I have some issue with like completely blocking off the road. So it's only the people who live on Mayfield. So I like the idea of putting that, that close off area in the middle section. And you know, unfortunately, that's, that's kind of a part of life then, you know, if you want to have. Traffic slowed down and less traffic coming down your road because you want to feel safer on your street. Then, you know, unfortunately you're going to have to take a little bit longer to go out onto the main road and go around. You know, you, you can't have it both ways and, and you know, frustrating thing, it's a frustrating thing for me looking at it. And knowing I've been out there as well. I know that our friend here on the, on the. In the guest room or the guests, you know, had mentioned that he feels Steve is the only person who cares. Well, I'd like to share with him that many of us have been out there and looked at it and talked to different residents. And we all care about it and we've been looking at this for a couple of years. And unfortunately, we can't always get things done as quickly as you'd like us to get done. We'd like, you know, we would have liked to have this done four years ago where we didn't have people leaving the roadway. You know, and that was another thing. When we had a couple of incidents where people left the roadway, we found out it was people who lived right in that area. So it's, it's a human behavior thing. And like I said, we're never going to please everyone and you know, people are going to get ticked off. You know, either we do something or we don't, you know, if, if, either way, people are going to be ticked off at us. And they're going to be mad about the situation. So I would say if we're going to do this voting for the people who live in those subdivisions. I want a really high return rate and a really high percentage on whatever option we go with.
What if? Yeah, good comments. Somebody's probably going to throw something at me for saying this, but what if, I know we didn't, we said it's not a speeding problem. Don't actually throw something at me. What if we had a speed camera, I mean, on there? Can we do that? Residents are not going to like that. I mean, they're not going to like any of this, but.
I don't believe the Illinois law allows us at this point as a municipality to have those. I think Chicago is the only one state that does that.
Yeah, I remember that.
I don't believe we're in that picture yet.
Okay. Oh, you don't need to. All right.
They did slow down when the man with the gun was out there.
And sitting in his, yeah, sitting in his chair. All right. Well, I think it's all good comments. I'd be interested to hear, you know, what staff comes up with the next couple of weeks for presenting this to the residents. I'm su, I'm sure that Mr. Zimmerman will hopefully share this with some of his neighbors. You know, the more people that opine on this, obviously way better. It's going to take a decent response rate, in my opinion, to. Impact their traffic movements in this area after folks have purchased homes here and living here for more than a decade. So with that, I will ask staff to, you know, and. I will ask staff to look at that and we'll talk about it at a future meeting. Thanks, Pete. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Pete.
All right. I'm going to move on to last item for discussion this evening. Hopefully getting. Close here, but I feel like this will be a good one too. The design development cost estimates for the Public Works Building. Who wants to go first? Mark?
Thank you, President Prowley. So I'll try to make this somewhat quick, but the purpose of coming for, in front of the board tonight. With this issue or this, this topic was to relay some information that's, that, that staff has become aware of during the process. Of the new Public Works Building. So one of the big things that we had anticipated was bringing in front of the board tonight, the issuance of bonds. For this particular project. One of the things that we wanted to discuss tonight with the board. Was that there's been some information that has become apparent to us from the time of first developing the conceptual budget. To the current point where we're at with our preliminary budget number one. And so we wanted to take this opportunity to, to talk to the board, give you that information and, and pass it along. And also ask for some feedback from you as our direction to move forward as it relates to issuing bonds. And what that, what that total amount would be. Tonight, I am just going to run through a few different things quickly. Mr. Todd Perone from Camozzi Construction was nice enough to grace us with his presence and be available to answer questions as well. As we have Mark Bushhouse and I believe Mark Brody, but I'm not sure if he was on there or not. But either way, staff should be able to answer any questions that we have. But one of the first items that I wanted to discuss was something that we actually brought in front of the board. One of the last times we had discussed, which is the twelve inch water main that we discovered needed to be relocated on the site. As it's going to be a conflict with the building of, of the construction of the new building. That added a, a cost of roughly seventy thousand dollars. The other major aspect that we have incurred since these two different budgets. Was the discovery of some soil issues on the site, mostly, mostly on the eastern part of the site. That will consist of basically two different methods to remedy that issue. One of those being what we're considering is geopiers. And then the other method where the building will not be. Located on the property, but the soil conditions are still. Poor will be a, a lime or a Portland or cement stabilization process. So that added roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the scope of the project as well. The other major thing that. That we're looking at consideration for is the covered walkway canopy system over the workshop areas. Whether or not that is something that we would like to move forward with or the board would like to see direction from. That has a price tag of roughly a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. In light of other things that have come up, have not impacted the budget as much as we had anticipated was the cost of steel. Fortunate for us, Camozzi, through their process and their experience and given, getting some feelers out there in the marketplace. Did have a good anticipation that steel would go up, which it did. But fortunately we had, or they had put cost in the budget to reflect that. So that was, you know, very good foresight on their part. However, it did cause staff to have to come back and look at it from a different perspective. Because there's also an availability issue that we have, mostly as it relates to the bar joy systems for this particular building. So staff went through the process of looking at alternative construction measurement, measures for the building. And coming up with some alternate ways to work around the bar joyce issues. So again, with all of these issues that have come up, we have taken many steps to try to figure out how to mitigate these, these costs. And still keep this, this project doable and as close to the original budget that we had proposed. The other major factor that we looked at for a cost savings perspective. So again, we, we talk about all these costs that we have that came up. We also look at, want to talk about some of the costs that we've. Gone through and, and been able to remove and help offset those increases. One of those would be. As it relates to the HVAC systems, we kind of reevaluated what was originally proposed in the budget. And, and came up with some alternate measures where we would install rooftop units. Roughly four of those to handle the heating and cooling for the entire building. And that was a deduct of roughly three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The other major cost savings was one that was the direction of the board at the last, one of the last meetings we had, which was. The removal of the future covered parking, which had a price tag of about roughly seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So again, these are all things that have come up throughout the process and I'm sure won't be the last as we, as we work through this. But they are things that we definitely want to convey to the board, make sure that you understand the processes and the things that we're going through. And also provide you with the information so we can get some feedback too on next steps as far as moving forward. With that, I'll, I'll definitely happy to take any questions from the board, but I didn't know if Director Van Vorn wanted to add anything. Or anyone else from the team.
Would you elevate Mark Bushhouse so he can be a panelist? So we can talk with him if we have questions?
Just, just a quick question. I, I was kind of concerned when I saw the, the soil boring and the added costs there. But the, the delay in the soil boring results were due to extenuating circumstances, correct?
I'm sorry, could you say that again? I was trying to.
I, I was disappointed when I saw the ads for the soil boring. But the delays there were due to really extenuating circumstances, correct?
Yeah, they, they were beyond our control.
Okay.
Yeah, it was nothing that, unfortunately, it was one of those unavoidable issues that arose.
Because that's something that, you know, for my projects, we would do literally like the day we get it under contract. I mean, so it's a day one type thing.
And it was, you know, the soil boring process was started. Unfortunately, there was, there was a delay. Again, that, that was just unforeseen.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question. So we're essentially, we're up about a hundred and. About two hundred thousand dollars, about.
Correct.
Because we were going to take the seven hundred and twenty-nine out. And we're down by five sixty-nine. So we're about two hundred thousand over with all of these additions and subtractions and, okay.
Question for you, Mark. Item four, which was the covered walkway canopy. That's exterior pedestrian aesthetic, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm not a fan of, of that additional cost. I, I don't feel that our, we need to be emotionally attached to the aesthetics of this facility. And that's just. For, for me, that's a hard no.
Absolutely. And, and those are, these are discussions in which, you know, throughout the process, when these have come up and we've had meetings with our. You know, entire team from Williams, Camozzi and Structurally too as well. That those are the things that we're starting to identify as prioritizing the things that, that, you know, we consider necessity. And what are the items that, that could potentially be cut when we come across issues like this that are going to add, you know, cost to the budget? So that feedback from, from the board is, is great for us.
And anytime that you can investigate this, think about it from our position or a resident's position that. You know, when we built this building, I remember there was chatter for years, a decade probably. Of a table that was too expensive or a chair that was too expensive. And understanding that we're trying to build a super functional building that we're going to be proud of, but residents are going to say, oh yeah. They were responsible with, with our fifteen million dollars.
I, I would agree a hundred percent. And you know, one of my statements, I think throughout is the fact that. You know, we need to have a building that we can walk residents through and, and make it justifiable. The amount of, you know, funds that, that it took to, to construct it.
I'm going to tell you right now, your landscape restoration for fifty thousand, five hundred and sixteen square feet is too low. Fifteen cents a square foot. I mean, it, this is government work. It's a prevailing wage project. I mean. You might barely be able to hydro seed an acre for seventy-five hundred bucks.
One of the components of this is when you look at the site and you look at the end landscaping, there's not, there's not a lot left.
I understand that. It does, but you've got a landscape allowance of thirty-five thousand. Native vegetated seeding of twelve thousand, which I'm sure we're, are we going to have a detention basin or something on our prop?
Be on the other side of the.
It's going to be around there, but your landscape restorations. Fifteen cents a square foot isn't going to cover it.
But there's only twenty square feet. When they're done with the building, there's nothing left.
Okay.
Well, and a question for you. So I know that we've had, sorry, is somebody talking?
Oh, go ahead.
So I know that we've had cost increase. I mean, we're seeing cost increase across the board on, on everything. This is a building that we've been anxious to build for a long time. At what point do we get in a position where we say, we're not doing this this year? We're not paying twenty, thirty, fifty percent extra for steel and lumber and wire, whatever it is that costs are going up. At what point do we get to that and say, pause?
I think that's a definite, you know. Point well received. I, I personally don't think we're there yet at, at a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. Over what the preliminary budget on a, on a fifteen plus million dollar project. I don't think that's the, the bus line, but that's my.
But we were, we pulled that covered parking before.
Correct.
So by my math, we're like a half million over. You know, where we were, we were in the fourteens before and we're not anymore. I mean, I'm just posing the question that we all need to consider that this is not a, we don't need it this year. We could do it next year. I know that the bond rates are there and I hate to throw a wrench in the whole project, but you know. You know, when, when you're a home builder and you're building homes and you need to build those homes, one thing. We need a public works facility, but we could also do it next year. And, and will we see savings? We might not.
Well, I'm, I'm afraid material costs and stuff, labor costs are going to go up, material costs are going to go up. I mean, look at the cost of lumber now. I mean, it's ridiculous, so.
It's insane. Like, and I don't know what, what you've seen on steel prices, but they've just continuously, you know, gone up. I mean. Are we there yet?
Well, labor costs are going to go up every year. I mean, that's a good.
Well, yeah, but the material right now due to COVID and, and now that everybody's building, it's crazy busy right now. I mean, what, do you? Have some thoughts on it? Yeah, just grab a mic. Good luck getting it on.
Yeah, our, our opinion on when that, when that point of time is when you make that decision. Would be bid day. You know, let's get to the point of actually physically knowing exactly what the cost increase is. The market will, will bear what the market bears when it comes to low bids. In every category, they will include the steel prices as they are at that day. To stop now. You know, we're, we're rolling, we're got momentum. Projects coming together really, really nicely. You know, yes, we're finding hiccups.
Yeah.
Like every project does. But we're, you know, we're looking at other ways to save money. So my recommendation would be to get to that, you know, that bid day, you know.
Open the bids, tabulate them, take a look, see what it looks like.
And you know where you're at. Exactly. And it's, it's a real number. You know, the numbers we've been giving you, they're budgets based off of our experience and what the market's doing. So, you know, they're not exact figures. They're, they're conceptual.
And so we're going to, this will end up being multiple bids though, right?
In this case, what we're trying to set up is a pre. Come out, an early package, we call it for steel and precast. Those two, those two trades will, they're going to need a lot of lead time. There's a significant period of time. Uh, there's a, uh, significant period of time it takes to do the shop drawings, do the engineering to produce the product and then obviously to fabricate it and get it on site. So by getting them out early, uh, we can get them into our schedule so the delivery date, uh, allows us to compact the schedule as much as possible.
So we're, we're pot committed then, when we issue that?
Well, understand something, when we do let, when we do bid those two trades, um, what we'll do is we'll set it up so that we're only on the hook for the engineering costs. So that, so that if there is a, there is another issue when the rest of the trades get bid, we, we can, we can still pull the plug and we're only paying for engineering, which is a very tiny cost.
Right, yeah. No, that's perfect. Thank you. And I'm not suggesting that we shelf the project at all, especially not midway through kind of figuring this out. I'm not, not skittish by this, but, um, just asking the questions, the pointed questions that we need to ask. I mean, 15 million is, is, you know, a lot, a lot of money. Um, one question I had on the, uh, interior air handling units that we had specked out, I know, cause I asked the specific question about them going, they were supposed to go on the second floor, right? On the mezzanine inside?
Correct.
Um, and we talked a little bit about why do we need a mezzanine? Oh, the air, the units are going there. Like what is the, why did we envision that those would be beneficial relative to the $350,000 cheaper units that go on the roof?
Well, there is always a, um, advantage from a, um, mechanical equipment standpoint that if the machi, if the equipment is inside, it should last longer. Um, the, the question is how much longer and what, what piece of, of what a piece of equipment is going to break first? Rooftop units are pretty, you know, they're pretty packaged, they're pretty, uh, standard type units and, you know, you, you can spend money on them to make them last longer and replace more parts. Um, the air handlers are generally going to, uh, last somewhat longer, what that, what that payoff is. You know, this is a constant discussion in our industry on what to do here. Constant.
Okay. Yeah, and we just got a new unit put on this building last week, which was a shock to all of us to have to do that after, what, 12 years, 13 years, something like that?
It can happen.
Yeah, it did.
And an air handler can go bad after 20. And, you know, it, it shouldn't, but, um, you know, those are the things you kind of got to look at.
Yeah.
Just to clarify one thing, we're only talking about putting rooftop units over the admin area and the, and the, um, shop, the four shop areas. The rest of the heating system, um, is a, a different system completely and it's, it's just heat.
Okay. And I appreciate you asking these, these hard questions as well, um, and looking at things and kind of saying, and I'm not in a position where I'm trying to cannibalize the building, where we say, oh, we made it a little bit shorter to save a little bit of money, now we can't get our plows in or whatever. We want a facility that's 100% functional for what we need, but like, you know, the canopy or what, the covered parking, things like that, it's low hanging fruit. Um, that's what the residents will, have expected us to do and it was not going to impact our functionality of it at all. Um, so those are my questions. Anybody have anything else?
I got one real quick. I guess this is either for.
Turn your mic on.
For either Jared or Mark. The, the book, on the, yeah, pink page, approximately $16 million, okay? And then you go on to the construction part and it's 15.7, dropping to 15.1. Uh, we're still doing 16 plus the 2 million from the other, what are we doing? Or why wouldn't we do 15 then and, and add 2?
So on the cover sheet, what we've included in the budget is $16 million. That's what got included in the budget at that time. That's the number we had.
Okay.
So that's where the cover sheet comes from. When you go to preliminary budget number one and you have a comparison between the conceptual budget.
Right.
And the preliminary budget number one, so, um, the conceptual budget, including that covered parking, was 15,727.
Right.
You deduct that off and that gets you to 14,998. Um, and we're not quite, we're probably about $160,000 more than that right now.
But you're still, you're still going to stay in the budget at 16 instead of 15 then?
The budget is what was approved.
Okay.
By you guys. We're not saying that we need to issue $16 million in bonds. Uh, that is one of the things that we wanted to talk to the board tonight about. Um, why we wanted to bring these things to you. Things did come up. We've been able to, as a team, uh, Camozzi, Williams, um, Engineering Enterprises and the Village, um, as a team, been able to come up with ways to save money so that we're, you know, we're seeing all these increases on one side, but we're also on the other side, uh, looking at ways to save the money. So, um, we did not want to bring the bonds, we didn't want to sell the bonds today because we wanted to bring these things to you guys first. Um, the intent is to sell the bonds on April 26th, uh, be back at the next meeting and sell the bonds, um, on April 26th. That's what Mark was talking about earlier in terms of, we just, we want to get a comfort level with the board as to, um, what you feel that amount should be.
So just in disgust, you know, at the last meeting, we pulled out the covered parking. We're basically at 15 million, 14,998. I'm going to call 15. Now we're at 15,170. That includes the 120, though, for the walkway. So if we pull that out, we're again, basically at, at 15.
What, when you send out, when we bid out steel and, and concrete or whatever we're bidding out for early bid, when are we looking at bidding that portion of work?
We are scheduled right now for a May 13th, um, bid date. I will tell you, uh, that's going to be, uh, something that Mark Bushouse, uh, from Williams is going to have to tell you whether that's attainable or not. Obviously, all these, all these issues that came up relatively, you know, not too long ago have made us change design.
Sure.
Well, that means we got to change the structural engineering that goes along with it. So, um, Imeg has been, uh, very, uh, very, um, accommodating with us making these changes and, and they want to help too. But on the same token, every time we make a change, it really affects that, 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 that time when the, you know, bid packages need to go out. So I'll let him make that, uh, you know, determination here very quickly whether we can make that date or not, but it'll be soon after that if not.
If it's around, if early, I'll call it our early bid, it's May 13th, when's the rest of the bid package is going out?
We had, we had scheduled that bid date to be.
Couple weeks after?
Oh, I know. I would say June 26th.
Yes.
June, June 26th.
And when are we, and I'm sure there's a scheduling here. When are we looking at starting construction?
Right around August 1st was, was the idea.
And then substantial completions, probably spring of.
12, 12 months after that would be the, the date.
What's the contingency we have built in, in this budget prelim? Is it 500?
Yeah, 500.
$500,000.
And I would tell you that's, um, that typically has underground site conditions built into it. We always say, once you get out of the ground, you've, you've eliminated a 50% of your risk, uh, on a project. So, you know, we didn't, we didn't, uh, we didn't lower that when we created a budget for $250,000 for unforeseen conditions that we know are there. So theoretically, could the contingency be, you know, reduced a little bit at this time? Sure, but it's still very early.
On the pre-cast. On the pre-cast, uh, who, who talks to them? Is it the?
We do.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay, cause they, they're the ones that went on Lake Street, put that new, and at that time, uh, they wanted a bat in that area and the lawyer said, if you ever come up with a pre-cast building, we'd be glad to give you the best price because we're so close. So you can remind them of that.
Aye.
They're close. I mean, and it should save us money because there is no transportation hardly at all.
Well, you still have to load it, you still have to, it's just you're driving less time, but I, I would never, um, I would never, uh, make the prediction that the closest guy is always the lowest. Don't, it's really got to do with when you have the bed space available and when it fills a slot. And that's why getting this in as early as possible is so important because that's where you get the competitive advantage. When they have the, the space available, they're going to, they're going to bid it aggressively. So you, you could see pre-cast come from some other state. It's possible.
Okay. All right.
So then if the board is comfortable with the reductions we've made to try and bring it in budget, including removing the canopy, um, then we will use those numbers and move forward to issue bonds.
Any other comments? Good with that?
Good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good work tonight. Um, anything new or unfinished?
Fun, uh, one thing, new concept. Um, there's been a couple of meetings where we've, we've kind of preemptively canceled COW as part of consent and I think sometimes that keeping that as an option based on board discussion might be more beneficial. Think of the, the traffic calming. Like, we could spend two hours or 20 hours, this group, going through some of those concepts, really putting a time into that, um, outside of a, you know, three, three-hour meeting here. Um, so just for consideration, the future may be, uh, pulling cancellation of COW off consent later in the agenda to see if anything in the meeting comes up and then making that determination. That's all.
Good call. So in the future, we'll just add that as like our last order of business, cancel the next meeting. We should be good to go. That's great. Anything else? All right, future meetings, uh, here, we'll be here again in, uh, two weeks, the 26th, and we'll go from there. Motion adjourned?
Still moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marissa?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yo, Teresa.
Yeah, she's not on.
She's gone.
All right. Trustee Lee?
Yes.
And we're adjourned. Thank you.[1789.61]